All set, Dave?
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Education to order. It's March 1st, 7:00 PM. This is a remote session for the purpose of discussing the budget. And our, I believe this would be considered our second budget meeting, but this one really kicks off the work sessions. So we will, as I had mentioned, I just want to make sure it's on the record that, that Dan will not be joining us today. So, everyone else is in attendance. We'll start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Again, tonight is our hearing of privilege of the floor. Will not be taking place as we're in a remote session and we are going to move directly into our work session. So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Schwartz and ask her to take it away. And then I'll come back and move us through the agenda, move us through the discussion.
Thank you, Dave. Karen, if you could put up our first slide. So tonight is a budget work session, which means the board will be doing no business in this meeting. It's not a business board meeting. It is simply a working session for the board having to do with our budget. Our next budget, I'm sorry, our next board meeting on the 8th is a business meeting. At that time, I will be bringing the board resolution for a high-risk fall two sports, as well as hopefully the approved protocols from our physicians as we begin that process. Fall two officially begins March 7th, which is Sunday. So we will be right on time. So with that said, tonight we'll focus solely on a budget discussion. And as I mentioned to the board last week, tonight's really your opportunity to talk to us about what you were thinking of in terms of items you might be willing to let go or compromise about versus items that you feel are part of our essence and not something that you would easily give up. Susan, may I just ask you to move the microphone a little closer to you? Sorry. Thank you. Next slide, Kay. All right, so tonight I want to begin by answering any questions board members might have about all of the information we gave you last week, which was quite significant. And my other goal for this evening is to develop an understanding of what you feel are negotiable or non-negotiable budget items. And if you're not sure about something, I would encourage you to just throw it out. And certainly that gives me some idea of what you're thinking about. Next slide. So a brief recap from last week. The carry forward budget is just over 59 million. The adopted budget for this year was just over 58 million. You know, that created a 1.1 million increase in spending or 2.01%. So that's what it would take us to get from this year's budget to next year's budget if we were simply carrying every program, every offering, everything that we presently do forward into coming school year. Separate from that is the district's tax levy limit calculation, which you know, although it's said to be a 2% tax levying limit, it really comes out to all different figures depending on your school district and the formula used. Unfortunately, you are aware that this year our tax levying limit is .13%. So the first draft budget increase of 2.1% would reflect a shortfall of almost $800,000. We talked a bit about that last week. That would be the amount we would have to reduce the carry forward budget by if we were trying to get to .13% tax levy limit. Last week, you tentatively decided to consider going out over that levy limit. And we talked about having the reduction to about 400,000. So I'm coming into this evening thinking that's my delta where I'm trying to get to. Any questions about that? Okay, Karen, next slide. I know these are my questions, but I bring them up as a way for you to frame the things that you are thinking about this evening perhaps. And I would also talk to you a little bit about public education and our goal to try to always work towards the greatest public good. So you know that I look for certain numbers in classes to maintain those classes. We look for efficiencies in terms of transportation. We have outsourced some services and brought others in-house. So we do any number of things that we believe will meet the greatest number of students' needs for a public institution. I want you to think about how that can best be achieved. I will give you an example. When I came here, kindergarten was a very interesting schedule where we brought students, half the class in mornings and the other half in in the afternoon. Then we brought everybody together for about two-thirds of the day. And then we brought them all together for the entire day. So that sort of played out from September till about November, early December. And then all students would be in kindergarten all day. One of the things that I had hoped for and that we eventually were able to do was create full-day kindergarten. But you also know kindergarten is not required under education law. And it doesn't have to be full day. So I've put this on the table before. I'm not necessarily putting it on the table tonight. It is an example. But if we reduce kindergarten to two truly half-day sessions, an AM and PM session, we would not have to fill some of our retirements. We would have reduced staffing significantly, probably four and a half positions. And four and a half positions could be in the neighborhood of $320,000. So close to that 400,000. Now, do I really think that's the best way to achieve great outcomes for our students, especially our youngest students as they enter? No, so that's why I won't be putting that on the table this year. But that's how I use these questions to work through that. And I certainly think we could provide you the data that shows that our kindergartners have done somewhat better on academic measures. Certainly, I think we have seen social and emotional growth in students. Those would be indicators to me that we've been successful. And then, as we would with any students, when I think about our kindergartners, for those students who don't flourish under our current kindergarten program, we do have other services in place, either through Section 504, through the CSE process, and some days, sometimes simply by connecting them to other professionals in the building. So that's how I use those questions when I'm thinking about a particular thing and what I think the pluses and minuses, the cost and benefit of those things are. So I offer you that. I'm sure you have your own ways of thinking about it as well. Next slide, Karen. And now, Dave, I'm going to turn it back to you to lead a discussion with the board. I'll be taking notes, Karen. I meant to ask you earlier if you could take notes also, so you and I will have notes to compare in terms of the board, individual members are thinking about particular things this evening. So back to you, Dave.
I'm muted. No, I'm not. I just wanted to clarify one thing for everyone. You will be bringing us, I believe, the next meeting, your recommendations for cuts. And just so folks know that this is like step one of Susan gathering the information for her to put forward some of the recommendations she's been thinking of and I'm sure working quite diligently on. So why don't we kick this off the way we normally do? I'd ask people to be respective of others and also to sort of just give one thought at a time and then we'll keep going around so that everybody gets an equal opportunity to speak here. And I'm going to do what I normally do, which is based on what I have on my screen. I'm going to go down the list of people and it's not in any kind of order that I can tell. So I'm just going to go. Dave? Thoughts?
You know, it's, I mean, it's still pretty early for me to be thinking about what we, what we could cut. Maybe if I just base it on my family alone, I think mental health should be number one on our list. Because I know me and my children and my wife, with being 100% virtual, this is not the best learning environment that we could hope for our children. And I'm certain they're either going to be a bit behind come the fall with academics, or at the very least, it's going to be a bumpy transition back to school. So I would have, you know, all our mental health programs, number one on my list to keep.
Non-negotiable, right, Dave?
Not at all, yeah.
Gotcha. Thanks. Hal?
All right, thank you. So if we're talking non-negotiable at this first go-around, I agree 1,000% with Dave. That's the number one thing that we can't get rid of. Yeah, there's no doubt about that.
Thanks. Pam?
That's my number one also is, is the mentor. As well as our guidance counselor. These kids come back to school. We're going to have all of the sixth graders who were never in the building this year are coming back to something that's totally foreign to them because they think so much differently in fifth grade. So I really think the mentor and the guidance counselor are the two things that are really non-negotiable.
Thanks, Pam. Rick?
So, I mean, there's a, there's a lot to talk about, I suppose, but my initial comments would be, hopefully, we're getting back into school. And, you know, of course, mental health will be part of it. But I think that we should be sensitive to some sort of training budget where teachers and staff should be ready to re-acclimate the kids coming back to school. All students should, you know, there should be some sensitivity and some, you know, you know, if there's some sort of training out there that I know happens, you know, as we lead into the school year, I think this should be part of it. So that definitely should not be cut. I think that's, that's important. And I'll yield my time back, but I do have, you know, more.
Yeah, and that was staff development then, right? Rick, sort of that line that you're talking about, and you got specific. It's too wild.
Yeah, teacher development, yeah.
Gotcha, thank you, okay. Kim?
Well, we all know my number one was mental health. So that has already been covered. It's one of the things. And I'm kind of looking proactively here than reactively. You know, our kids have been, you know, virtual. They haven't been following up on their homework. They haven't been, some are doing great and some aren't. So I think one of the things I'd like us to not take away is our reading intervention teachers. I think that that is going to be completely imperative to getting us where we need to be. We've been saying, you know, we're not where we need to be right now. So I don't want to take that away as a budget cut and then beg to bring them back a year later when we're where we need to be again.
My, my first three have been taken. Everyone knows me, that mental health was going to be my first one and, and guidance counselors and staff development. So all three of those were mentioned. I, I also want to make sure that we have those specialty programs in place for those students who are in need and for those students who excel to, to try not to have to cut any of those programs. I, I think that they're all, you know, really critical pieces of development regardless of where the child is in their, their academic and social skill level. So just, you know, to add that one onto the list of whatever one else had. Clearly, I can see that mental health is, Susan, one of the top priorities. So why don't we go through, Rick, why don't we, I'm going to start in this order. Rick, why don't you go? Some other thoughts?
Some other thoughts? I guess, you know, one question.
I'm not hearing, Rick, isn't it?
Sorry, is that better?
Yes, thank you, Rick.
I guess I, I'd like to know if as a board or group here, we should have a consensus on a target number we're looking to get to. That would kind of shape, you know, what, what needs to be cut, if anything, and the size of, of programs or whatever we're going to be looking at. I think, you know, I try to suggest to the group to kind of think of it that way. If, you know.
We do, we do get to that. Actually, next meeting, Rick, we will be trying to lock into a number so that we can, as you said, so that we're able to really judge some of the level of priority within the cuts and the ads. That we will do that. What we'd like to do is give Susan her, her chance to give us some recommendations as well.
Okay. So. So, okay, okay, I understand. So then, um, so I suppose another thing that we're going to have to kind of keep and maybe enhance is our technology. I think that's something going forward since we seem to have a feeling like there's going to be a virtual option going forward. It'd be smart to have the right software and applications in place to service, you know, that slice of student that does stay home.
Thanks. We're thinking in the same category today, Rick, you and I, in the same area. Kim?
Well, Rick just took mine, so.
I'll come back there if you want.
No, that's fine. One of the things that, you know, it kind of goes with our mental health is arts and education. I think that that's one that gets really nicked every time we look at a budget. I know we really haven't done it at Scotts Glenville, but I don't think there's room to cut from there. So I would like to kind of take that off the table because we've got music teachers and art teachers sharing. Schools are moving around and I just feel like in band is so, you know, sparse right now. I think that that's something that we need just to even include for our mental health. So I would like to make sure that we kind of leave them alone.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. Pam?
I think I'm pretty much on the same page as everybody else. I think it's very interesting that all of us seem to really have the same priorities for our kids. And I think that's really good.
Yeah, thank you. Dave?
I know it's a bit redundant. I've been talking about it for like a year, but as far as like PPE and stuff that we've, those increased costs that we've used for, you know, fighting COVID, that, that probably, that budget line probably shouldn't change too awful much from this year to next year until we know, you know, like where numbers are, numbers of vaccinations. You know, there's a lot of things that we probably should try to keep that status quo. And hopefully that would be a, you know, like a slush fund thing.
Thanks, Dave. Hal?
I'm glad to see everyone's on the technology bus that I started last year at this same meeting. So thanks for joining me on the bus, guys and gals. But to expand upon that, that a little bit is, is I look at the, the proposed budget and I get the technology for the, the kids that are virtual. But, you know, are we to a point or can we start to have the conversation, have the technology in the classroom? We have $209,000 for textbooks. I guess I would say, what are those textbooks? And I'm dumb, so just educate me, please. But, you know, it's 2021. We waste a lot of paper. We, we kill a lot of trees for all the paper that goes out between the board and between the schools and the kids. And, you know, I'm glad my kids aren't elementary schools anymore because all the cardinal updates we got every week was awesome. But, you know, maybe we can do a little bit of electronics instead of spending such a huge budget on papers. And maybe that 209 or some of it can go to more technology for kids that are in the classrooms can start learning at a younger age how to use this, not as they, they get into middle school, so.
Thanks, Al. Thank you for giving us a cut to pay for things. That's a
I'm here to help, Dave.
Positive thought. I'm going to.
Dave, can I come in for just a sec?
Yes, you may.
Karen just asked me if I wanted her to talk about how textbook monies work. And I said not tonight because tonight is really to hear what you have to say as board members before I start, for lack of better words, tanking you with the reality of what we face. So this is really, I hope you're best thinking if all things were equal. But we will respond to anything. Rick has asked a couple of questions, Hal has asked a question. We'll be responding to all of those. But tonight I just really want to hear your thoughts.
Thank you, Susan. So my, um, I want to make an additional one as well. And it's, I, I want to see all of our extracurricular activities kept whole. To me, that's a, an additional non-negotiable that if anything, we are going to need even some way to figure out even additional opportunities for our young people to associate with each other and communicate with each other and be with each other. But assuming we are, we are over the crisis of COVID, you know, I don't think we're going to be over it entirely. But if we're in a position where we can really be back to school in a manner, I'd love to make sure that we have our club money in place. I'd love to make sure that, as Kim said, you know, our arts and music and our fine arts program remains in place. I want to make sure that all of our sports are able to, to be funded, you know, with adequate coaches that are going to be needed. If you think about it, from some sports, they've actually lost almost a year and a half in some cases, in music and arts. I think it's going to take time to bring kids back to where they are. So that, that's an additional, to me, non-negotiable piece as well.
And I, I agree with you on that, Dave, because I think that that goes part of our mental health, right? I think that engaging students in school through, whether it's sports or arts or any club, I think that we're going to need that engagement to bring our students back to a point where they are enjoying school, they're enjoying learning because it's not just read this book and answer these questions. And Dave, I had a question for you. When you talked earlier about programs like, did you have, include in that your, your advanced classes too, as well as enrichment classes?
Yeah. Yep, all, all the, all the above.
All right, I want to make sure I just hit and cross it off my list because I had it on there too.
I'll go around one more time and then I'll just open it up if folks are good with that. Hal?
Yeah, the only thing, I had a question here and it kind of echoes earlier what Pam had mentioned about guidance counselors. When we're looking at the first draft, and I don't know if you want me to get specific or not, but, you know, Susan and Drew on the, the first draft of the, the guidance counselors for the elementary schools, that's, that's blank on our first draft?
Correct. We have guidance counselors from middle and secondary who provide content to the elementary schools. You might recall that last year we had Denise Caruso dedicated to that. She was actually going school to school and working in each of the schools based on a new SED mandate. This year, we put Denise back at secondary after a retirement, didn't increase staffing and rely on our school's social workers and psychologists to pick up some of that slack in the elementaries. So no, there's, there's not money associated with positions in that line right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Susan, I, you know, having the social workers and the psychologists in the school, they're doing an amazing job at that level. So I'm comfortable with that guidance not being there because I think that they're getting it through the system that's in place.
Kim?
Things we've talked about in previous years, and I don't really think that this is probably the year for it. But I think we still need to think about athletic trainer when we get back to our sports full-time. It's something that we have never had, yet I think it could be very valuable for all the students that are taking part in sports. But until we really get the sports all back up and running, I don't think this is probably the time to cross that bridge.
Yeah.
That's on my wish list, Pam, that's on my wish list.
Yeah, it's my wish list.
It's been on our wish list for a while, unfortunately. Susan, is that, if we were to, I, I've seen some schools pay for their athletic trainer through booster club money. Is that a possibility?
I'd have to research that with the attorney, Dave. I'm not entirely sure. We'd be happy to look into that though.
I don't know all the arrangements. I just know that.
Dave, I can't hear you.
That's because I accidentally muted myself. I, I'm, I'm not sure all the arrangements, but I know that someone here approached me and said, that's how we fund ours. I just thought I'd give you a heads up, they said to me. So I went, I wanted to bring that up as a potential wishlist, if that's possible way of making that actually happen. Because I think folks may not recognize, and I know this group probably does, but an athletic trainer is so much more than just that person that's at the games that runs out and puts ice on somebody's leg. You know, they, they put programs in place and I, I never played a sport without an athletic director, athletic trainer. So it's kind of a weird thing seeing that not be there. Coaches do a lot of that nowadays, I know. So that would also probably be one of mine. Dave?
Honestly, you, you guys have really kind of covered everything I wanted to bring up.
Um, Rick?
So obviously, we have to be mindful of the PPE and cleaning material and the time for the folks, custodial staff, to keep the buildings clean because obviously you want, you know, the students and folks that are inside the building to continue to feel safe. So that's something that we shouldn't budget for.
Thanks. So, um, this is always the not-so-favorite part of the evening. And I thank Dave for, or I think Hal for bringing up the first one. But do folks have some thoughts about areas that we could potentially save some money? See, this one I leave open rather than pick on anybody in particular. So if somebody's got a thought, just speak up. Excuse me?
This, this is the section where you'd like to talk about areas to cut or things to remove?
Things to remove, things that we could potentially do away with. Some of which end up being mandated that we don't really, we would love to get rid of, but are mandated. But this is the time to bring them up.
Did we already buy any additional buses?
Um, the, the buses are on a, Drew, do you want to speak to how the buses are separate budgeted?
Yeah, the buses are what you approved to have a proposition. There'll be a second proposition at the May vote. I think it was four buses that we put in there. I think it was four buses that we put in there, so they're not purchased until the public votes on it, and then we will go out and then buy those in the summer of two thousand twenty-one.
They don't affect this budget?
No, we wouldn't borrow the money, Rick, until two thousand twenty, uh, July two thousand twenty-one, and therefore wouldn't hit the books until the following budget year.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? I mean, folks, a, a, anything's a go here, and I don't want, this is always an area that people feel a little uncomfortable because it's, um, we don't want people thinking we don't want something, um, which is not necessarily always the case. It's kind of like we want something and we got to evaluate it against it, um, against something else. You know, one of the things I had always wondered about was the ways that we could generate additional revenue with our school. Um, you know, whether it was renting the field out to, to, um, a football club or something, a semi-professional club or something, so you know, even ideas that generate revenue are sort of the same idea of, um, making cuts, so some we can't do, some we can do, but if anybody has additional thoughts in that area, um, throw them out. I'm sure Susan will let us know next week which ones are mandates and which ones we can do or can't do by, by state law, but it's worth tossing it out. I'll just throw in one more into the, the non, um, kind of non-negotiable, which is we've always been true to our, um, negotiated contracts and you know, although we, we very often will seek some assistance, um, with them extending or whatever, but, um, you know, we, we don't ever look to roll back um, and cancel negotiated contracts, and I don't think we want to start ever doing that. And I know, Susan, that's one you would never accept anyway.
I noticed a, a, a large adjustment in the uh retirees insurance. Is there a chance, Drew, you could speak to the, the large increase there?
Um, as I wrote previously, that's the, we have eleven uh staff retiring. So they shift from the active health insurance code to the retirement line. That's just a shift. Higher that comes in for that person replaces the decrease in active health insurance, but the active person goes to the uh retirement line. We pick up their insurance.
You beat me to my follow-up. Okay, gotcha.
Any other thoughts from folks? Um, Susan, I think, I think you heard fairly clear from the board their vision of what we want to definitely keep and some ideas about what might be nice. Um, I, I know you've been hard at work with your list and we're going to get it next week. Um, is there any other questions you would like to ask us before we call our work session to order here, or to, I mean, to closure?
Can you think of anything else to win that tonight?
And, and I would suggest folks if, if, oh, I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead. I can't hear you.
There was, there we go. Thank you. Um, no, that was helpful information. I know it's always hard to think about um, the potential of having to reduce or potentially give something up. Um, and the board uh knows that my strategy is usually to try to do things that don't have a direct impact on students first and foremost, but also um, on existing employees, and that will continue to be my, my goal. Um, I will say that we have a very beautiful list of non-negotiables. Um, I will make sure that none of those things is devastated. But we might be having some harder conversations in our following budget uh work discussions. Because even if you go with half and reduce by four hundred thousand, um, we, we might be looking at some things that none of us would uh choose to reduce, um, if, if we were in crack living in an easier economic time, if our tax levy limit wasn't point one three.
So I have a couple of requests. Um, one is if folks can review what we got sent to us last week and what we're going to get sent this week. Rick, thank you for bringing that question up. Um, and Hal, your question as well. Um, with the book numbers, if you guys can really read that over and see any areas you may have that look a little unusual to you or shifting money around that, that, um, really raises a flag to you, make sure we, we bring that discussion up for next week.
Hey, Dave, I do have one. I'm looking at the budget. So we have um budgeted um fifth grade field trips in there. Yes, I am a parent of a fifth grader, so I would really love to have field trips for them. So, you know, when you combine all four schools, it's not much, but we still have nine thousand dollars sitting there um, that we're not utilizing this year, and are we going to utilize it next year? I hate to say cut field trips because you know I'm the first person to say outside learning is amazing and our kids really need that, but we didn't use it last year because of COVID. We're not using it this year because of COVID. And next year, is it even going to be a possibility um, to be able to take all these kids to a place because of, it, it's obviously putting kids on buses. It costs money. It's putting kids less, more than ten people in a room. So it's not much, but it's nine thousand dollars sitting right there.
No, thank you. Thank you for that, that thought. Um, it, it's, there's going to be some tough decisions to make. The second thing that I had was, Drew, I would appreciate, and I hope this isn't too much work. I, the way you know numbers, I don't think so. But if you could present to us, you already did the number um, with a four hundred thousand dollar cut, could you also show us what our tax levy would be with a two hundred thousand dollar reduction? Um, just in case we, we had to get to that number. I, I just, I'm not proposing that. I just want to make sure we have the number available if it comes up. Um, and then, you know, my last thing is, is, um, don't really, um, I'm trying to word this the right way. Don't, don't be afraid to make suggestions, folks, about things that you wonder whether the value is there or not. It's not always an easy thing. Um, besides being school Board of Education members, we're also parents. We are also community members, and we live in a community where some of these cuts actually, um, hurt folks. Um, and, and sometimes those decisions are hard, but um, I think this was great work session. I think we gave Susan what she was looking for for our first, um, our, our first meeting, so if, uh, folks.
Yep. I know I'm being a pain tonight. Um, but as we're looking at the budget, what is um the additional cost for our distance learning for having, you know, a hybrid learning again next year? So is there an additional cost that we need to take into consideration as we're looking at this budget?
Okay, so would, Drew, can you have that for us next week?
Sure. I just want to make sure we are clear about um what Kim is asking us. I'm sorry. Okay, um, you don't mean, I don't think, distance learning, um, in the sense of what we do at the high school where we share courses with other schools?
No, like a virtual.
Virtual, yep.
Yeah, like a hybrid learning. Is that costing us more? And do we really need to put, because we need that for next year probably, so we need to consider that in our budget um, as we go forward, as that this needs to be built in, guys, and it's going to be added on no matter what.
Thank you, Kim.
Dave, I have something else.
Go ahead, please.
Do we know, should, you know, Drew, I probably another follow-up for Drew. We're giving a bunch of homework tonight. Feel bad, but uh the uh, should, should we end up with stimulus money from the federal government? Do we know what that would be earmarked for within the district? Just to help us decide what to cut, what not to cut, if we already know where that money would go?
We don't know any of the people's funds at this point.
Should, should, should we? But should we receive them? Do you know where you'd allocate them?
We can allocate, allocate them. They, they won't come just, um, as dollars you can spend anywhere that makes you, makes sense to you necessarily. Usually those dollars with guidance.
They usually tell us what, what we have to spend it on.
Sure, so if it's going to be allocated towards PPE, we, we'd have to spend it on something like that, okay?
Yeah.
That was back to why Drew and I, um, in our uh budget work always say to the board and to folks, um, we can't count on money we don't know about, um, and not knowing what the, um, how much is certainly one problem, but also not knowing what it can be used for. Is it money that has to supplement money we're already spending? Is it money meant to supply it? But we'll need more guidance, um, about what we can actually do with those funds.
And I would remind folks, the last time money like this came into existence, um, and there was less guidance in that money than there probably could have been or should have been, um, we ended up with layoffs, but many, many, many school districts were borderline bankrupt and almost had to go out and laid off like huge percentage of their, of their staff because they used it for ongoing expenses when the next year that money never came back. It was one-time-only money and they tried to build program with it and um, I, I know this group wouldn't do that, but that was just a throwing out a history lesson from the old days. I think Susan remembers that and Pam probably does, and it was a a nerve-wracking time. So if we don't have anything, oh, go ahead. Oh, nothing. Okay, so if we don't have anything else, I'm going to suggest, um, that we move on to new business, other business, I'm sorry. Um, the other business is budget-oriented anyway, so we, we hit most of the other business today, but if there anything else, um, anyone wanted to bring up, I next week we will be entering that part of the, the budget process where Susan will present to us and, and we'll start really dig, digging deep into the numbers of what the board is very comfortable with from a, um, a percentage of increase in all the tax levy and, and the amount of money that we're willing to put into the budget, so, um, be ready for that conversation. Other than that, I think it's just, um, Susan, unless you had something?
Dave, quick question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
For other business for tonight's set work session, is it only budget-related, or is it just other business to bring up topics?
Well, we're not discussing other topics like, um, you know, the sports and all that. We, Susan had mentioned that's going to be on next week's budget, but I mean, if you wanted to bring up a topic that we, we would want to make sure we have covered, Hal, go ahead.
Well, it obviously has to do with sports and the feedback that I'm getting from community again, so I don't want to, you know, step down the wrong hole with, with Susan and Karen and yourself and everybody, but, um, I think we're a little behind the gun again here, and, um, you know, I, I heard some numbers today that are pretty staggering for um, you know, a fat car guy like myself here when it comes to some of our student athletes and the number of them that are failing right now. And it, it's an important topic that, you know, besides education and besides the the budget that we have that in front of us, which is a big task, is that we get our kids back to school safely. I get it. And, um, and get them back in sports, uh, in clubs and fine arts and everything because it's the carrot at the end of the stick, and I know I'm in sales. That's what I talk about. You know, if you give me a chicken, I'm going to chase it. If these kids have a carrot, they're going to chase it, and they, they got to go to practice. They got to report to their coach or, or their instructor or their leader and, uh, um, sorry for my soapbox again here, but it just, I just feel that the season starts on, on Sunday for these kids, and we're not going to talk about the coaches and everything until Monday night. And I've heard that, you know, the districts are trying to put schedules together and other schools have already voted on this. Um, and I get COVID is a real thing. Trust me, I get it. Um, but at the same aspect, I think that's, uh, that we need to, we just need to keep plugging away for our kids. That's, that's, that's my soapbox for tonight, and I think we need to look at every avenue. I think we need to look at every field that we have available to get JV kids playing and to get modified kids playing. Um, we have a lot of elementary schools. We have Buchindhoff Fields. I know other school districts are not using buses. Yeah, I get it. There's a lot of things with protocols and COVID. I've been dealing with this from March, just like you all have with protocols and COVID, but uh, I, I, I think we have enough fields in the Scotia Glenville area that, you know, if we work together and work smarter with community members and the youth sports directors, um, we can do something to get as many kids out there again and have them be accountable to themselves and their parents and their grades, which is most important. That's why we're all here, right? To get our kids learning and educated, and they need that carrot. I'm sorry about that, but I'm done now, I guess, so.
Thanks, Hal. And we will, it will be first and foremost that our meeting next week.
And next week, we're going to be voting on, um, if we are going to play second sports. Is that what I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I was
Yes, that, like, next week is the vote on moving forward with, um,
We have two high-risk sports, volleyball and football. We have three medium-risk sports, boys and girls soccer and nope, not lacrosse. Thank you.
Field hockey, yes.
That's the vote to say yes, they can play or no, they can't play. Is that what we're
Correct. Correct, and I will bring you a single resolution that includes all of those sports. But certainly the board can't break it apart if that's, um, what they choose to do and um, tackle each one of those things separately.
So you're not considering lacrosse as well?
Uh, that is not, not this season, Rick.
I think that's spring, right?
That'll be the next one, next season.
Okay.
These are the sports that Section Two is playing this season, fall two, the fall two season.
And that's
You're welcome.
Self, you mean the season, Susan, that, that the that's been set up, right? Not so this is, this is fall two?
This is, yes, this is fall that we didn't play.
Right.
Fall two, and then there will be a truncated spring season.
And that would be lacrosse?
Yes.
And now we just have to hope that we have enough referees.
Yes. I would agree.
Well, thank you, everyone, for a lot of deep thought on, on the budget tonight. Um, this is always an interesting time of the year for all of us, so with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yeah.
Can I get a second? All in All in favor of adjourned? Anyone opposed to adjourned? Anyone abstaining from adjourned? We have a, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Um.